Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. I call the City Council Committee, the whole meeting for Wednesday, July 19th, to order. This time, we'll have a moment of silence for you to think about whatever it is you'd like Thank you. Everyone, please stand and join Alderman Kelly in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Mr. Crupp, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Jobson.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Present, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everybody. As we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee, the whole, I'd like to again welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing with the City Council, your fellow Davenporters, and anybody throughout the region. We're happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. Especially for folks in here, just ask if you'd please put them on silent or turn them off simply that they don't get in the way of anybody speaking. If you want to address any item to the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name, ward, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not to any individual. You also have the opportunity to address the council public business at the end for items that are not on the agenda. Please limit your remarks to three minutes, and I ask that everybody please observe the commonly accepted rules of dignity, decorum, and good taste. Thank you. Is there a city administrator update, Ms. Gleason, tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. We have no public hearings, so we'll move to petitions and communications. Anyone from my colleagues? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Attorney Warner, there was a news report about a new investigation regarding the collapse. That seemed strange. Could you share a little bit of that, please? Was it a news report?
Sure, thank you. We don't comment a lot on pending investigations, but I will say, I saw that news report. It was a bit of a surprise. Our Fire Marshal's Office opened an investigation almost immediately after the partial collapse. We requested assistance from the DCI for their help and skills to assist us. They responded within days and were on scene and working with our folks, and so I'm not sure why that became a news item in the last few days. There's no developments there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. Okay, so we'll move to the areas of discussion, community development, public safety, public works and finance. The first area is community development. Alderman Gripp will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. We have two items on our agenda this evening. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of city-owned property located in the 300 block of West 16th Street to Davis Priority Properties LLC. Before we take public comment, I wanted to mention that Alderman Kelly had let me know that he plans to table this until he can get the two parties together to discuss. So is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Yeah, I did want to take a moment to table this, and I have one of the parties that's out of town, so I want to table it till I get both parties at the table. So I'd like to make a motion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. This item has been tabled.
Item number two is a resolution approving case F-23-04, being the request of Linda R. Duffy Revocable Trust for a final plat of Duffy Acres, a two-lot subdivision on 14.1 acres located at 7,400 Jersey Ridge Road. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Okay. Seeing no one, this item will go on the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to table item number one and place item number two on the consent agenda. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The agenda has been set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next area is public safety. Alderman Jobson will discuss. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule V, "Faraway Stop Intersections" of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Schedules" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by adding Utah Avenue at Telegraph Road thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration ordinance amending Schedule XI, "Resident Parking Only," of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Schedules" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by adding East Lombard Street along the furnages of 2337, 2342, 2343, and 2347 East Lombard Street thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving street, lane, and public ground closures on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Neon Moon Big Street Festival, 246 West 3rd Street, Number 100, 9:00 AM, Saturday, July 29, 2023, to 2:00 AM, Sunday, July 30, 2023. Closure, West 3rd Street from Harrison Street to Main Street. Next, Third Missionary Baptist Church Gospel Explosion Weekend, 222 West 14th Street, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Saturday, August 12, 2023. Closure, West 14th Street from Harrison Street to Main Street. Next, Mississippi River Distilling Company Alternating Currents at the Downtown Lounge, 318 East 2nd Street, 1:00 PM, Friday, August 18, 2023, through 12:00 AM, Saturday, August 19, 2023, and 2:00 PM, Saturday, August 19, 2023, through 1:00 AM, Sunday, August 20, 2023. Closure, East-West Alley from Iowa Street to the Mid-American Parking Lot between East 2nd Street and East 3rd Street. Next, Rochelle Buckwalter, Maid Market QC, Alternating Currents, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Saturday, August 19, 2023. Closure, East 2nd Street from Perry Street to Iowa Street. And then last, Lisa Rush, Back-to-School Bash, 1423 East 34th Street, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Saturday, August 19, 2023. Closure, East 34th Street between 1411 and 1423 East 34th Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on. And we have item number four, motion approving noise variance requests on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. I will read each of these before asking for comment. First, Neon Moon Big Street Festival, 246 West 3rd Street, Number 100, 12:00 PM, Saturday, July 29, 2023, through 12:00 AM, Sunday, July 30, 2023. Outdoor music bands over 50 dB. Next, Third Missionary Baptist Church Gospel Explosion Weekend, 222 West 14th Street, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Friday, August 11, 2023. 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Saturday, August 12, 2023, and 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Sunday, August 13, 2023. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, Mississippi River Distilling Company Alternating Currents at the Downtown Lounge, 318 East 2nd Street, 3:00 PM, Friday, August 18, 2023, through 12:00 AM, Saturday, August 19, 2023, and 3:00 PM, Saturday, August 19, through 1:00 AM, Sunday, August 20, 2023. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. And last, Rochelle Buckwalter, Maid Market QC, Alternating Currents, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Saturday, August 19, 2023. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on. We have item number five, motion approving a noise variance request for the list of dates and times. Wendy's Exhaust Hood Cleaning, 1545 West Locust Street, 11:00 PM, Sunday, August 6, 2023, through 7:00 AM, Monday, August 7, 2023, and 11:00 PM, Sunday, February 4, 2024, through 7:00 AM, Monday, February 5, 2024. Commercial exhaust hood cleaning over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? From council, I see Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Chair. I just recently spoke to the owners of Wendy's and some of the neighbors in the neighborhood that would be affected. I'd like to make an amendment to change the dates to July 29, 2023, and February 24, 2024. Both are Saturday nights from 1:00 AM to 4:00 AM on both nights for it to be cleaned. So everybody was in agreement on that. So I'd like to make that amendment.
So we have a motion and a second. Voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That amendment with that item passes. I will just say, we'll make a motion and leave that one on discussion. And then last, on the public safety agenda, item number six, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location, transfer, et cetera. First, Bootleg Hill Honey Meads, 321 East 2nd Street, new license, license upgrade, license type, Class C liquor, on premises. Next, German American Heritage Center, 712 West 2nd Street Parking Lot, temporary outdoor area event, August 15 through 19. License type, special Class C beer/wine on premises. Next, Kilkenny's Pub and Eatery, 300 West 2nd Street, temporary outdoor area, July 28 through 30. License type, Class C liquor. And then we have Nally's Kitchen, 1622 Rockingham Road, new license, license upgrade, license type, Class C liquor on premises. And then there are those items under Section B, the annual licenses renewals, which I do not read, but are there for people's review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on item number six? Anyone from council? Then I would entertain a motion for all items to be placed on consent except for item number five to be placed on discussion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 16 items tonight for public works. Item number one is the third consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 13.28 entitled "Surface Strains of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa," by amending subsection 13.28.030 for language cleanup and clarity. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is the first consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 13.34 entitled "Stormwater Management" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by amending various sections thereto, by updating acceptable software programs utilized for stormwater calculations, providing clarification on easement verbiage, aligning the fee schedule with other municipal code chapters, removing outdated sections, and outlining bonding procedures for landscape and vegetation. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the 510 West 6th Street retaining wall replacement project by Legacy Corporation in the amount of $131,177.60. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding a contract for the West Locust Street, North Division Street to Marquette Street resurfacing project, Hawkeye Paving Corporation, in the amount of $889,323.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the purchase of one Tromal screen from Murphy Tractor and Equipment in the amount of $408,250 using Sourcewell Contract Number 030923 ECV. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the purchase of one rear loader solid waste truck from Kilburg Equipment in the amount of $252,215. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding a contract for the manufacturing and delivery of a generator heat recovery silencer unit for the water pollution control plant in the amount of $95,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution accepting the FY 2024 Iowa Department of Transportation State Transit Assistance Program grant in the approximate amount of $542,205. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the submission of a project grant program application to the Federal Highway Administration for financial assistance with enhancing and improving transportation access through flood mitigation efforts and infrastructure improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Mr. Mayor, could you come and talk to us a little bit about this? This is an important part of our flood mitigation plan, I think, and so we don't know if we'll get it, but I think it might be interesting for people to know more about. Thank you.
Sure. So Clay Merritt, Public Works. So following the approval of the 2021, if I remember correctly, flood resiliency plan, we had a number of projects spelled within to help us with a number of things. One of those is improving the transportation system during large-scale flooding events. That's exactly what the components of this grant program do. So in some key areas, we do specific road raises so that we can maintain a permanent detour route. Another instance is during high levels of flood is sometimes we lose access unless we have the city intervene, is to the Arsenal Bridge and on the Gaines Street corridor to Centennial Bridge. So this would have key road raises at those particular intersections. And then last, we have some transportation safety improvements that we can do, so some intersection upgrades and some traffic signal upgrades as well. So we take advantage of that.
And do we know when we might hear back from this?
So this is a brand-new program from the Federal Highway Administration, so I'm anticipating some point at the end of the calendar year is what we're hoping for. We have tried similar components through our Raze Grant, which is kind of the USDOT's normal, their largest discretionary program. We've gotten really close the last couple of years. We've been told we made it all the way to the secretary's desk for his selection, but just haven't quite made it. So we're hoping this particular program that they just created was actually geared towards sustainable infrastructure and protect against natural disasters or unexpected natural events. So we're hoping this is a little bit more geared to what they're looking for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for anybody in chambers or listening in, as always, there's a map, there's an explanation, and the online agenda. Just go to the City Davenport website, click on the drop-down menu for meeting agendas, and you will find it there. So thank you.
Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I just wanted to say that when we approved the flood resiliency plan back in 2021, one of the things that we said is this is a very expensive plan, and we don't have the capacity to implement this within our own capital budget, and we would need the support of the federal government and the state of Iowa wherever we could. We have been very aggressive, and I thank our staff for that. We've been very aggressive in going after federal dollars to make this happen. We've been awarded some of the smaller projects. We've been starting in earnest so the public knows, right? We put a plan in place. We started to work that plan. It's being done incrementally, but as the money becomes available from the federal government, we'll pay our share, and they'll help us out. Very encouraging to hear, Clay, that it sounds like this submission is kind of in alignment with these federal dollars. So that's good, and I would just continue to ask the mayor to press our federal delegates and engage the council where you need it to push for this because it's very important that we get this support from the feds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a continuing authorities' program grant application to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for financial assistance with the Credit Island Causeway Bridge Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Gripp?
Thank you. Right, this is very similar to the previous one where when we get major floods, we wash out the causeway. Credit Island gets shut down for a long time. I think if we're going to make future investments in Credit Island, which we absolutely should, it's one of our great parks in Davenport and a real pride of the West End, we need to be able to get the bridge. I was talking with Alderman Dunn earlier, and he pointed out that this is a 100% grant. It's not an 80/20, which is what I assumed it was. So if we got this one, this would be a big deal. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on, and then I'll read items 11 through 15 and ask for comment. Item number 11 is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 12 is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 13 is a resolution assessing the cost of condemned property demolitions at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 14 is a resolution assessing the cost of snow removal at various lots and tracts of real estate. And item number 15 is a resolution assessing the cost of tree removal at various lots and tracts of real estate. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address any of these items? Council? Seeing none, these items move on. And item number 16 is a motion approving a professional service agreement for engineering services for the Black Hawk Creek Gate replacement to H.R. Green in the amount of $88,200. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Sure will. Thank you, sir. I recommend that all 16 items be put on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that concludes public works for this evening, Your Honor. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I read the single item on the finance agenda, I just want to take a point of personal privilege and thank Sergeant Harris for escorting my family out quickly when you realized I only had one item to read and how disappointed they would be in my lack of importance. Item number one is a resolution accepting the annual Burn Justice Assistance Grant, or JAG, from the federal government for 2023 and 2024 in the amount of $90,321. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one? Council? Seeing no one. Below, we have our purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. We won't read those individually, but they are listed there for your information. And Alderman Cornet, would you please set our finance agenda?
I move that item one be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That concludes finance, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. Next, is there any other ordinances, motions, or resolutions? There are none for tonight. The next area, is there any public business? Of course, you know our rules, so anyone, please, you'll have three minutes, and thank you for coming. Anyone?
Brian Swager, Davenport, Rock Island. We've heard many speeches about First Amendment. We're here at the beginning of the meeting. Our comments are welcome for other people to hear, but we're not broadcasting. We are the people who elected you to represent us, period. You are supposed to be our voices. Previous meeting, we had a petition over 2,000 and multiple phone calls. We were ignored. You know, I stood out front for a few minutes before I come into the council meeting. Our landscape, our city stained. The landscape changed forever, and three of the most precious gifts this city has, its citizens, were silenced. And we, as speakers here, have been silenced. I think maybe we ought to get a couple rolls of duct tape to prove our point. Because as we speak here, none of our fellow citizens can hear us. As we speak through our hearts and our experiences and what this has done to the city, we're told no. We're taken from five minutes to three. I could understand that because we had so many people speaking, but now it's quieted down, and we're still limited to three. Forty percent. Forty percent of our time's been taken away. Amazing. Forty percent of this council's been taken away. Amazing. But you know what? Week after week after week, we are here. We don't come up here to hear ourselves talk. You are our representatives, whether you're our aldermen, aldermen at large, it doesn't matter. You are our voices, and if you keep silencing our voices, who knows? You know, you make enough people, maybe they'll vote you out, maybe they won't. I don't really care. I come here to speak for my voice to matter. I was taught, my family's always been taught, leave whatever you're doing a little better. When my son died, I got the Will Initiative. It helped crime victims. His death matters. Let's make these three matter. Let's make sure not running around town saying, oh, this villain, this villain, you know? Wow. It just amazes me what it took, and I'm saddened, and I hope you remember our voices matter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. Malik Salisbury, 4th Ward. Again, you know, hitting on all the classics, restricting our speaking time from five minutes to three is simply a way to limit citizens from voicing more concerns that they have and questions with city council, especially with a recent article from the Quad City Times by Sarah Watson, which highlights not only the past business dealings between Alderman McGinnis and Andrew Walt. Also goes into detail about...
Sir, please don't call out names. Don't call out names, or I have to ask you to sit down. Continue.
Okay. I didn't know that we were sensitive. Okay, cool. I mean, I'm sure you'll offer the same advice to the Quad City Times. Be quiet, don't mention people's names. Wonderful. It goes into their business relationship as well as how much and who knew about the condition... conditions of the Davenport between, before its collapse, as well as someone's reputation as a slumlord. I mean, I'm certain that his reputation as a slumlord started far beyond his purchase of an 820 West Sixth Street property, which he also bought for a whopping $5,000, to which he would go around and sell for a profit of $48,600, after, of course, putting in a measly $3,200 in repairs. I encourage everyone to take a look at the parcel search tool, scottcountyiowa.gov/parcels to see the extent of the property that he owns. The TLDR of it, he currently owns 24 properties in Davenport, that currently owns 24 properties in Davenport. Two in 2015, three in 2020, 19 in 2019. Now, glad the pandemic was good to somebody. Now, while he owns all these properties, the renovations are few and far in between. With the most recent, over $800,000 in repair coming from a recent purchase in 2020. For the 2015 to 2019 numbers, including the 820 West Sixth property, he, he spent a total of $73,736 on repairs, not including work orders for an amount of zero, miscellaneous for the amount of zero, which is a mere 3.37% of the $2,95,580 in 2015 from 2019. Just take a look for yourselves. It's pretty, it's pretty interesting.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, city council. My name's Loura Rodriguez. You remember me from last time. I work up at the center, Love and Action at 1411 North Brady Street in the Hilltop neighborhood. I think you've heard all you need to hear about yourselves regarding the building collapse that killed my friend Daniel Preon and left another of my friends homeless. I think you've heard enough about that from me personally, because I've been telling you about these things for five years. I, I think I've pretty much made my point, but currently, I just want to tell you that you're still failing. It's very hot outside. People are lacking a place to go during the day. Humility of Mary doesn't open until 5:00 P.M. There are very few cooling centers, and there's very little transportation for the homeless in this town. I see at least, I don't know, 40 people a day at the center. They access the food pantry there. They access other services that are in the building, including Quad City Harm Reduction. There are people who are dealing with dire circumstances here in this city that you should know about. It's not enough to send a downtown Davenport representative to shoo them away or make them someone else's problem. I can't tell you in the time that I've worked at the center how many times the police would come and pick someone up and bring them right back, because we're one of the few places that don't trespass people for very long. They're still allowed to come back. There are agencies in this town that trespass individuals with no one, nowhere else to go. And I encourage you to look into that because there is a gap in services, because you are failing. Women, children, people experiencing domestic violence, people sleeping in cars and tents, those tents are set on fire. I know at least three people who have been set on fire sleeping in a tent in the city of Davenport. Do something. Do something. I've come here to tell you to please do something, because it's not enough to offer lip service, cover your butt, silence the public, all the things that you're doing. I don't care about that. Just do your job, is all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Winger, Decriminalize Davenport. I'm not going to talk to you. Nobody's going to say-
Sir, address the council. Sir? Address the council.
Is this, what, this is what happened right here with the, with the silencing of the-
If you're not going to address the council, I'm not going to allow you to speak, sir.
Straight up fascism.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Have a nice day. Anyone else? Thank you.
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. I also am concerned about the homeless residents in our city. Our city is so caught up in trying to make certain areas look pretty that it has forgotten about the less fortunate who don't have anywhere to go during the day. And in the evenings, they have to wait in long lines to see if they can even get a bed at one of the overflowing shelters. They're forced to sleep in parks, park bathrooms if we have inclement weather, under bridges and anywhere else they can find if they couldn't get a bed. This is very dangerous, not to mention they are not wild animals who are meant to live outdoors. They only receive two meals a day most days, one on Sundays, and that's if they're even able to make it there in time. I had the privilege of serving a meal to them one day, and when I saw an elderly man who was so sick and malnourished, he could only lay on the ground as he waited for it, it brought me to tears. Another elderly gentleman told me he was going to die that day, and his friend wrapped his arm around him and said, no, you weren't. I will keep you safe. We have had all of these buildings that people want to tear down. Why can't we stop building more fancy community centers and use that money to fix up Monroe if you can in Washington schools, since they have kitchen and bathroom areas already in place? We don't need more green space. We need residents to be safe and protected, every resident. You should spend less time trying to silence the only aldermen who are out there truly trying to help the city's residents. They can't, many of these people can't get a job because they have no permanent address, and they have no permanent address because they can't get a job. It's a cruel and vicious cycle that they go through every single day of their lives. And no matter how rich or poor someone is, all lives matter. Walt is out there being protected, and it doesn't matter that he's going out getting his pool service, getting all these haircuts and stuff. Is he going to be held accountable or not?
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, Jessica Nelson, Second Ward. I kind of did some thinking this week when I've heard several aldermen address that it was just time to heal. I don't think you guys understand the word, what it actually means. It doesn't mean sweep it under the rug. To speak on the homelessness, I had to do some research to make sure I had my factual, my facts straight. But I want to know why, face of the West End, a homeless man was found in his camp, deceased, and yet nothing was covered about it. It happened in the Third Ward. I, I wanted to make sure I had my facts because it was that fine line between First and Third. But this is a main person that was good to almost everybody he came across. And I know it's been publicly displayed, and it's publicly out there, and why hasn't it been addressed by our city? That just shows, city of Davenport do not care about their homeless.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Lakana Dixon, Davenport resident, Fifth Ward. Today is a day that I am extremely happy. A few weeks ago, I came to you guys and said, what about the homeless? Right? And I'm happy to see everybody paying attention. I want you guys to realize, a building falling down has made your city open their eyes. We, y'all want to say that we're threatening you guys and everything else, but you have a community that finally has their eyes wide open. We're noticing everything. Our city streets, our buildings, our homeless, our eyes are wide open. So the only thing that I can tell you guys to do is accept us, because we care. Team up with us. Use us. But instead of that, when you try to silence us, you're, you're just covering it up. We're not going to allow you to cover it up. And then you cut it off, you don't want people to see what we're telling you guys. Most of us are telling the truth, whether you want to admit it or not, but our voices go beyond these walls. And will continue to go beyond these walls. So I'm asking you guys to use us. If you don't use us, we'll just move on without y'all, because we're going to be forced to. And I'll say thank you to my community, because y'all all working together and standing together. Keep going. You guys should be saying that to us. Thank you. Say thank you to us. We, we were out there with the hurting families, not y'all. Say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Rhonda Gordon. I'm in the First Ward, and I'm not coming up here to tell you all that you're failing. I'm, I'm from Portland, Oregon. I lived there 58 years. It was beautiful. I had a beautiful home with five bedrooms, three bathrooms, double car, I mean, but it got, Portland's council, Portland's motto is keep Portland weird. And our government quit listening. My city council quit listening. Now, I had to leave because it was so violent. Everyone I knew that lived in Portland, my friends, they had to leave. One family is still there. My daughter moved to Gaston. She says, Mommy, you can smell Portland eight miles out. She had to go downtown, go to the courthouse for something, and she said a man walking down dropped his drawers and pooed right there on the sidewalk, and nobody did anything. Every park, the, the, the turnarounds, you know, you drive around them and there's flowers in the street, and you, there's tents there. There's tents in the parks in front of the courthouse, in front of the police station. There's tents everywhere. There's, it stinks. There's drug needles and drugs everywhere and violence, drive-by shootings. My old home, my beautiful neighborhood isn't fit to live in. And I came here, I've been here in this state since 2014, and I thought I found a home. I thought it was safe. And now I'm scared. Is my home here going to end up like my beautiful home? Is, if you don't listen, if you don't do something, this is going to be another Portland. It's such a shame. It's beautiful here. These people, they care about each other. They care about you. They voted you in here. Please, please listen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Gleason, anything else? Okay.
My name is Katie Stewart. I am Davenport resident. First and foremost, I don't know if I have any vets here right now in the audience, but I think our vets and the ones that died and fought for our constitutional rights would be rolling in their graves right now. With the fact of the lack of taking our time trying to cut the public hearing our voices and our concerns. Second, I just want to say that we had a wonderful march just past Saturday, so I want to thank everybody in my community that I love so dearly. We came together and had a wonderful march held in right here from Leclerc Park to there with some speakers. And I want to personally thank the council people that were there. We know who you are. We seen you, we talked to you, we hugged you. There were a couple that I had reached out that would have been here, and they were the ones, to the ones that should have been there and could have been there. You messed it up in a good event, but was expected with how we've been treated by that, so that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Donovan Yule, Sixth Ward. The article that I hadn't heard of before was titled Criminal Case Opened in Davenport Building Collapse. The paragraph reads, "A criminal investigation is underway." That investigation means law enforcement have reason to believe a crime may have occurred. Please tell me you've put everyone on administrative leave who's under an investigation for a crime.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hello. I'm Alicia Guzens, owner of Gillies Corner Tap. I'm here in light of the current situation that's been happening around the city of Davenport. I'm sure you guys are well aware of all the issues that have been going on at our local bars. And I just want to know if we're all, you know, held to the same standards as far as security expectations, as far as, you know, whether or not you're going to be withholding other people's liquor licenses as you are mine, considering there's been shootings at other establishments. Just because, no, just because people haven't died in these other situations doesn't make it any less dangerous for people out here. I've been made aware of another establishment had that had some issues last night, and I really feel like playing whack-a-mole with our establishments here, you know, knocking us out one by one is only setting all the other bars that are in this area up for failure. I really feel like, you know, they're, the bad elements are going to be out here regardless. They're not going to go home. So, you know, issuing liquor licenses to businesses to sell till 2:00 A.M., you're doing that for everyone. And, you know, what are we doing to protect our businesses? Because I know, McGinnis, you have said that the neighborhoods are terrorized. They are, and so are our businesses. We are too, just as terrorized as the communities. And I was also told that considering my business is in a neighborhood in the West End of Davenport, that's why we were being treated the way we were, because of the neighbors that, you know, the community. There's people that live downtown. That is also a neighborhood. And I don't know if you guys have been downtown past a certain hour, but it is, it's craziness. You can hardly drive in the streets downtown. There's people out everywhere, you know, and I just, I don't see how, I don't see how closing businesses is the answer. There was an off-duty officer working at the Danview when the gentleman got shot in the parking lot. That didn't stop anything from happening. I couldn't get an off-duty officer to work at Gillies. I was told that if they didn't want to, they didn't have to. And I understand that. But why would an off-duty officer be available to work for Jack's or Stockade or Danview, but not Gillies? I don't understand why that, why that's happening. Why are they able to pick and choose, you know what I mean? Or why you guys selectively monitor the areas downtown, but then leave all of the other establishments vulnerable to crime? I asked for, I asked for police to be present in the West End. When I was told that wasn't going to happen, that we would not use the city resources to help protect my establishment, you wouldn't even put cameras down there.
Thank you, ma'am.
I asked about them.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Have a good evening, have a good weekend.